Good evening. We welcome you all here tonight to the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We're starting just a few minutes late. We had a heavy agenda for our study meeting. In fact, didn't finish all that. But we note that we have all council members present tonight. The opening ceremony tonight, we've invited Rachel White to come forward, and she is going to share some of her poetry with us.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Bigelow, members of the city council, distinguished guests and residents of West Valley City, my name is Rachel White, and I feel very lucky to work in the legal department here at City Hall, where I've enjoyed a variety of tasks and the opportunity to make a positive difference. Thank you very much, Mayor Bigelow, for the invitation to read some poetry this evening as part of the opening ceremony, especially when you have such a heavy agenda. So I'd like to read two poems that I wrote for the Utah Arts Festival, which will be happening again this coming weekend. The first poem is entitled "Desert Sonnet", and was written about Everett Russe, who as a young man of 20, disappeared into the wilderness around Escalante in 1934, and has since become the topic of many books and legends. Desert Sonnet. Shapeshifting land, ever-new and inexhaustible. The undefinable west, an endless invitation to go now. Leave what you know and get lost, to wander, explore the coiled, empty center of being. Come face-to-face with self and understand existence. To enter from the rim of the world, your heart aglyst that leads you on inscrutable, opaque as rock, to follow the sweeping wind over the edge, to catch and pin your fluttering thoughts in a book of simple beauty. Of stones piled on a ledge, some tools, scraps of bones becoming dust. Your own uncertain end, a mystery at last. The second poem is entitled "Salt Lake Psalm", and is meant to encompass cities throughout the Salt Lake Valley, and I think it's especially applicable to West Valley City. Salt Lake Psalm. Let us sing in praise of our holy city. Let us sing in thanks for holy land beside a majestic mountain range that catches clouds and harvests rain. The Wasatch, many waters and many streams that run perennially in green corridors, alive with fish and songbirds, cranes and ducks. To join the Jordan River, the Great Salt Lake, Verdant Valley inhabited since time began, by native tribes immemorial, Ute, Paiute, Goshu, and Shoshone, following the seasons from place to place in patterns unchanged, till Jim Bridger and Etienne Provost, trappers, scouts, and guides, put the lake on the map as an arm of the Pacific, and thus began a collision of cultures, old and new, that continues to the present day in our cosmopolitan urban fusion. A place of intersecting paths at the edge of the Great Basin, where Mormon immigrants saw in the blank space a tabula rasa on which to inscribe a platypus utopia. Joseph Spinst's vision of peaceful Zion as a hive of agrarian homesteads. Self-sufficient nestled side-by-side is found in Thomas Jefferson's plan for a rural and harmonious America, transposed across the border to Mexico by the saints fleeing persecution, who could live here as they saw fit, and keep building their beautiful temple, granite-inspired and crowned with a golden angel who presides over the basin meridian, ground zero of the convergence of cultures, customs, faiths, tribes, and countries, travelers, explorers, migrants, pioneers, refugees, pilgrims, citizens of the world in search of peace, who retain an inspiring optimism and believe that better things are possible despite innocence lost in the crossfire and suffering of the homeless, addicted, or ill, if we unify our centers, each of us, a holy city on earth, a spiritual point and conduit for the mysterious divine, if we can tune in and find the frequency known to the vibrating atoms of our beings, whose resonant strings have an eternal note. May we quiet the noise enough to hear it. Let us sing in praise of our holy city. Let us sing in thanks for holy land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We oftentimes have scouts here. I do see a young man here who may be a scout. Uh-huh. And if you feel comfortable, we'd like to invite you to come up and tell us what you're doing here tonight and your act number.
I'm working on my citizenship, and my act number is 4273.
Oh, great. Welcome tonight. We appreciate having you here. You picked a fun night, and you can say as long as you like, or we don't know how long this is going to last tonight. So, thank you. Our minutes of June 12th. Mayor move for approval of the minutes?
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion? Looks like they're okay the way they are. All in favor of the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to our comment period. Now, we've had three sign up, but my guess is that some of you may be here to speak on a later item in the agenda. We will be holding a public hearing on GPZ 4-2018, followed by Paul Garbett. If you are here to speak on that issue, we will allow you to speak then rather than take it during our regular public comment. So I'm assuming you're the other... Darren Blanchard?
Yes.
Saying... Mike Markham, though usually has a list.
I have it.
So, if that's the case, Mike, come on up. We don't have anyone else standing up. We'll give you the rest an opportunity in a minute.
Okay, Mike Markham, 3008 Alice Quay. And as I've told you guys before, I'm going to the West Valley City Citizens Police Academy. Last week was our first day, which I think everybody should go through. We learn CPR. But there's one thing that the city needs, and that is two more of the Lucas CPR machines. We have three of them. We have five trucks. If you can free up a guy, we can get those in each truck. Because I could only do CPR for a minute, and I was exhausted. To get the compression that you need, I almost had to lift my knees off of the ground to get the one-third compression into the chest. They have a dummy that tells you how well you're doing and if you're saving somebody's life, and my guy was a goner. So I think if you can open your wallets, open the budget... We open the budget a lot. Maybe we could come up with some money to get a couple more of those Lucas devices. Might even need a third one if we're going to have a truck in the new fire station. I don't know that part. But, you know, there seems to be a lot of money within the city out there floating around to buy and do a lot of different things. So if we could purchase a couple of life-saving devices to put in our trucks, it would free up a person, plus they can... They don't have to step aside while they lift the person on the stretcher. They can have that on there, put the person on the stretcher. They don't have to re-prime the heart when they step away. So yeah, let's look around, see if we can come up with a little extra money that we can buy some more life-saving devices for the city, because we're growing, and I think it's important to do that. And like I said before, I think everybody up there needs to go through the citizens' training, because it's amazing what you see on the inside and the out. I'm loving it. I'd like to be recycled, go through it again. For those of you that didn't go in the Army, recycling was a terrible term. So... But it's great. I think you all need to go through it. Maybe Karen couldn't right now with a crutch, but yeah. Anyway, you learn a lot. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for our general public comment? Seeing no one else, we'll postpone the public comment period, and we will... City manager, any comments you need to add tonight?
No comment tonight, sir. Thank you.
Any council members have any comments?
I'd just like to commend Mr. Markham for doing the Citizens Academy. Again, I've talked to him privately, but I did it about 15 years ago, and it changed my view of the city and exactly what we need to do in the city. So it is a vital one, and I'm sure we'll be doing it more often. So, and when you see it come up on our calendars, take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. So next, we go to item seven on our agenda. This is to accept public input regarding application GPZ 4-2018, followed by Paul Garbett. General plan change from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Zone change from R18 to RM, and this is property at 5332 West Highbury Parkway. In the discussion of this, we will also deal with ordinance 18-22, which is our method of making the general plan change, and ordinance 18-23, which is the zone change. This is for property in the Highbury subdivision, one that has received a lot of attention over the past while. Let's see, 12.85 acre parcel. Anything else there? Proposed density of the project is 12 units per acre, total of 153 units. Let's see... 1,300 square feet is the minimum size. Proposed townhomes be zero-energy-ready. Landscaping will be localscape. That's probably enough right now. I'll leave it at that. There'll probably be quite a bit of discussion on it. So that's the introduction to the issue. So that's the one before us that we're going to be talking about. Now, we will open a public hearing on this issue. Anyone is allowed to speak. And there's not a time limit on these. There is on our public comment period, because we get a lot more of those. Now, we probably won't put a time limit on, but if it gets to be 10:11 at night, the council may change their mind. Okay, so no guarantees. But initially, we'll just open it up and allow people to speak and discuss the issue. So with that, it's open. And I know we had a couple of people who had signed up, and we may as well start with those. I suspect there'll be more.
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to briefly speak about this proposed change specifically. I'm not speaking specifically as a member of the HOA board for Highbury. I'm just speaking as an individual here. I sat through your study meeting. I've sat through several study meetings in the last few months. They're very interesting sometimes. But one thing that came up this last meeting that I thought was interesting was talking about the new homes, about the percentage of space that's left, and the reasons why you set the standards for the new home sizes. And I just want to say that, from my standpoint, I really enjoy living in West Valley City. I love this city. I don't know why anyone would say that they wouldn't want to live in West Valley City. I'm not from Utah originally, and any stigma that may exist out there, I'm not familiar with it other than what I've heard when I told people I moved to West Valley. But that being said, we have some beautiful homes. We have a very beautiful neighborhood. And I can tell you, some comments came up about perhaps maybe needing more smaller homes out there. Whatever that percentage of people is, I can tell you the same thing from personal experience, a number of people that have told me that they have to look outside of the city to find larger homes, that they want to find something larger and nicer. So I don't know how that balances, but I can tell you that my experience is, is if we outgrow our home and we need to find something larger, newer, nicer, we're going to have our time doing that in the city. And I don't like that idea, because I love living in the city personally. I have faith in West Valley City, that this city is going in a great direction. I very much approve of the police department, of the city council, the mayor. I've seen you guys work, and I'm also involved with the Citizens Academy with Mike as well. I am very, very pleased with the direction that I'm seeing that the city's going, and I have a tremendous amount of faith that this city is improving and only going to be doing things that are going to be improving this city in the future. And so I just hope that as you keep that in mind as we look at a zoning change that in my opinion is stepping backwards on the path that you've set right now for the city to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Blanchard?
Hi, I'm Darren Blanchard. I live at 2809 South Britson Way. Thank you for allowing us to come and participate in our government and to speak with you tonight. I just wanted to express my thoughts and concerns with the new Garbett plan. We just got to see it today. It was posted to our HOA Facebook page. So we got to see kind of what the new Garbett plan is from what the townhomes that were proposed previously. And after looking at it, I can say that it's not great. It's not ideal. It's a lot of very small lots packed in side-by-side with no sidewalks, short driveways, and not a lot of space to breathe there. Looking at the homes and the zero scape and the lack of sidewalks and the lack of yards and the small driveways and how tightly packed in the homes are, it to me didn't look like a place that you would call home. It looked like a place that you would go to sleep. And it is a step in the right directions being a single-family home as opposed to the townhomes previously proposed, but it's not coming far enough in my opinion. Some of the things I noticed were that the park or the communal area that was incorporated with the townhomes is gone from the new plan. That would be a shame to miss out on having a place, especially for so many people, packed into a small area. There was an idea or plans to have some sort of canoe rental shop or something like that to make use of the waterways, and I didn't see anything like that on the new plan. It was just houses one after another packed in there. You know, I don't want to deviate from our topic at hand, but it ties in a little bit. I do want to say thank you very much to the city for helping us with our parking issue in the Highbury community. The no-parking signs have gone up, and we've seen a drastic improvement practically overnight. It's been a really good response. We've had police out to give warnings, which I think is the right thing to do. I don't think that anyone's out to get anyone here. We just want to fix a problem. And it's nice to know that the police have gone and knocked on doors and talked to people and given warnings, you know, before ticketing and things like that. But our streets are cleared, and it's been amazing. With that said, there is still a parking issue on Highbury Parkway, which extends out to the section of land that's being proposed tonight. And whether Garbett Homes knows it or not, they already have a parking issue. I wish I had taken a picture of the entryway, the street that would go into this property, so they could see how welcoming it is, having a line of cars on both sides with big box trucks, you know, cap-stoning each end. The parking issue is already there for them. It already exists. And the tightly packed-in lots is not going to help the parking issue. I don't think that the plan has incorporated that enough. I do want to echo, you know, Matt's sentiment and say that I love living in West Valley. I came here because my ex-wife was from here, and this is where we live. She's an ex-wife, and I don't hold that against West Valley at all. But I love living here, and it's great. I work at the U hospital and commute there. West Valley has a lot going for it, particularly the Highbury area. We've got excellent amenities. We have a great movie theater that's new. We have a clinic right there. We have a great STEM school. We have, you know, a lot of shopping and restaurants and things like that. We have a golf course. The area itself is beautiful. We have the ponds and the waterways and the parkways. You know, I drive home every day, and once I hit Highbury Parkway, it becomes a nice drive. It's off the freeway, and it's trees, you know, on both sides of you, and flowers and things, and I actually enjoy that drive home. We have so much going for us, though, with the proximity to Salt Lake and the airport. We're in this amazing location, that that land is prime. And I think that waiting to get what we want for our community and for our city is what we really want to have. I've seen firsthand so many times where you want to get something done now, and so you kind of take the best available, but it's not exactly what you want, and then you're stuck with that decision, and it ends up becoming something that you regret later down the road. I think that holding any new builder to the standards of building that you've set previously is a good thing, and I support that. And I hope that you'll continue to seek that higher standard for our cities and for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this?
Hello, Mayor. My name is Nicole McCray. I've stood up here in front of you several times. I live at 5228 West Sandwell Drive in Highbury Place. Over the past few months, we, as Highbury owners, have stood in front of you, and we've told you what a special place this is, what a great area it is, and how much we love it. I mentioned that I've lived here for 10 years and was drawn to the area because of all the amazing green space. And we loved how Highbury was set up, that it had such an amazing avenues, community feel. And we were rest assured that there was a plan for the community, a plan that included more single-family homes. A few years ago, as we've talked about, when the Highbury Pinnacle Apartments were built, that area that they were sitting on was once zoned a low-density as well. We were saddened to discover that it came with all these parking problems and traffic congestion, crime rate. And we believe that changing this zoning from low to mid-density would bring further congestion and problems to the area. We ask you to consider the current ratio of single-family homes. We've shown you many drawings and maps related to that. They are very disproportionate currently. We were informed by the planning commission that zoning was changed from low-density to mid-density to accommodate the building of Highbury Pinnacle Apartments, with the caveat that GPZ 4-2018 would remain low-density if apartments were to be built there. Therefore, we ask you that the original agreement be honored and allow GPZ 4 to remain low-density. Single-family homes can be built with high efficiency, sustainability, and high performance. I encourage Garbett Homes to build a single-family house similar to those currently located in our already Highbury Place community. The single-family homes will sell in Highbury due to our amazing location and available amenities that Darren just barely spoke about. I strongly oppose changing this parcel into medium-density for the mere fact that the Highbury community, we deserve more, and West Valley deserves more. We can blossom and be an amazing, beautiful area. Not that we aren't already, but I do believe that single-family homes will do this area justice. We prefer not to have our streets crowded and deal with the parking issues that will come with mid-level density. Please help us remain the jewel that we are here in West Valley and leave that parcel designated as low-density for single-family homes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jason Miller. I live at 5378 Sefton Drive, also in Highbury. And I would just like to echo some of the things that Nicole, Matt, and Darren have said. But... And I certainly oppose rezoning that area to anything other than single-family homes. And as Nicole said, that entire area, as far as I know, was at one-time zoned single-family, but there was a compromise made to allow Pinnacle Highbury to be built. Part of that compromise was that this parcel spoke of remains low-density and single-family. I have to assume that the council at that time, when that change was made, had their reasons for wanting that left low-density. I can't imagine anything would have happened to change your mind since that happened, but I hope not. Please, leave it low-density. There's... As they've said, there are not enough nice, single-family neighborhoods in West Valley City. We need more of that. Not more apartments, not more townhomes, not more condos. So please leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think that Garbett Homes is planning on speaking.
Okay. Thank you, City Council, for allowing us to come before you and present. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to show along with our application and our presentation, if we can load that.
For the record, we need your name.
Oh, sorry. My name is Paul Garbett. Do you need an address as well?
Contact information.
273 Northeast Capital Street, Salt Lake City, Utah, April 103. So we are proposing, on the next slide, 153 townhomes at Highbury. And this is a different site plan than what we originally came to the city with. In our discussions with... In our meeting with the neighborhood and discussions with the city council, we quickly discovered that parking was a major concern and a major issue here. So we went back and redesigned it in order to accommodate extra, additional guest parking above what we originally had. With this concept, we can get three and a half parking spaces to the unit. We believe that this will take care of the residents that we have. It's a two-car garage that owners will be able to park in with guest parking space throughout the community, as well as front-loaded townhomes that would have the ability of guest parking in the driveway up to the unit. With this concept, one of the highlights that we wanted to feature and believe would make a real impact and be something that would be desirable for not only our residents but also the greater community would be what we are calling a boat dock. It would be basically a clubhouse, but with the ability for residents and Highbury residents as well to come and rent canoes and enjoy the pond and the canal system that is, that you have here in this community. And to test that out, we actually spent a Saturday and got canoes and went on the canal to explore that. And I've got a short video clip to illustrate what we found there. the canal system. It's a great way to spend a Saturday, a Sunday, get out on the river. Once you get past those communities, it really feels like you're out on the lake. And it fit in very well with our objective to try and provide something of greater value to potential residents. I'd like to move on to what these homes would look like. We have an initial concept rendering of the townhome style. The architects call it modicle, which is a modern nautical theme. There would be three-bedroom townhomes, two and a half baths, two-car garages, with home prices starting in the 280s and going up into the 300s. The Garbet Homes sustainability is very important to us. And in this project, we wanted to feature what is called local landscaping. This is a project put on by the Water Conservancy District and it's an effort to save millions of gallons of water in this desert climate that we live in. It includes indigenous plants that are lower maintenance and have a better opportunity to thrive in our climate without sacrificing any curb appeal. In addition to landscaping water-saving, we have tankless water heaters with pump circulation technology, low-flow toilets and faucets, and energy-starred appliances. The next slide is a floor plan for these townhomes. Two-car garages, three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, upgraded finishes that include granite countertops, solid-surface flooring, and nine-foot ceilings, among many others, stainless steel appliances. But the real, the real thing that's important in our homes is the high performance that we bring. And one of the reasons we wanted to be here was to present to you what Garbet Homes is actually doing as far as sustainability and energy performance. We are concerned that you have been getting information that is not accurate from your assistant manager in how she presents our homes. We are the most efficient, energy-efficient builder in the state of Utah and our homes back that up. In this project, we would include solar on every home. Solar is only one component of the high-performance home. With increased insulation, you can achieve greater gains in the efficiency of a home. So, what we have done is over 10 years, we've developed systems that make the walls thicker so we can fit more insulation in there. We also have innovative framing techniques that allow us to change the design of the home in order to maximize efficiency. Because our homes are so tight, they are equipped with an ERB system, which circulates the air within your home several times throughout the day in order to keep the most fresh air possible inside of your home. We also have high-performance windows and lights, high-performance heating and cooling, tankless water heaters, eco-friendly materials, and are part of a zero-energy-ready program that is part of the federal government. So, it's one thing for us to just tell you that we are high-efficient in energy and have a great energy record, but it doesn't really count for much if you can't measure it. So, every one of our homes are independently tested and verified and receive what is called a HERS score. And if you'll bear with me, it gets a little bit technical, but basically, just like cars have a miles per gallon, you can measure the efficiency of a home through the HERS score and that stands for Home Energy Rating System. A typical home that is built today has to comply with minimum codes. And what that is, and that HERS score looks at like about 100 to 90, our homes are consistently coming in the low 40s to 50s. So, that's twice as efficient as our competitors. A zero means you're, is the home that produces as much energy as it's consuming. And we've modeled these homes out and they would achieve that score in the low 40s, so 42, 43, which is, again, twice as efficient as our competition. Here, I've included two HERS scores for homes that we recently built that are townhomes and would be comparable to this product. And both of them have, so this one has a score of 41 and the other one has a score of 42. Once again, this is independently tested and verified by a third party. We are part of the Zero Energy Ready Homes program and this may be hard to make out, but we just completed over 100 homes that qualify for this program. And it's a higher standard of efficiency that a home is held to. It's verified and fact-checked. We also have members of our community that are pushing for sustainability and pushing for energy performance that can attest to our building practices. And I'd like to read a letter from Tom Carter, who is the Executive Director of Clean Air And he said, "The Utah Clean Air Partnership, also known as UCARE, works hard to ensure that each Utahn knows that they have a role to play in cleaning our air. We have a unique air quality situation here in our beautiful state, and while things are getting better, we are constantly looking to identify those in our community who go above and beyond in assisting us to achieve our goals of cleaner air. As a state, we currently sit in a serious non-attainment for wintertime, PM 2.5, and moderate non-attainment time for summertime, ozone." I think the translation for that is we have bad air quality in the winter and in the summer. "The state is developing an implementation plan right now to ease the problems we have, specifically surrounding inversion season and how business, industries, and individuals must take a more active role in this process. To that end, it is one thing to build to existing codes and standards. It is another thing to voluntarily seek out ways to make buildings and developments cleaner, more sustainable, and more energy-efficient. Without a doubt, Garbet Homes is a leader in building energy-efficient, high-performance homes that assist our state in cleaning our air. Area sources like our homes account for 38% of all emissions in our state. Garbet Homes are the most efficient homes in the market with significantly less emissions than many other builders in the state. All homes are required to be built to a certain code. Utah's code is filled with exceptions and loopholes that functionally, homes are only built to the 2009 standard. Garbet Homes, in contrast, is voluntarily building to a 2032 standard. The amount of technology and energy innovations they are putting into each home is 23 years ahead of the competition. They are building future homes. The Utah Clean Air Partnership deeply appreciates the challenging work that Garbet Homes does to clean the air. We know that this is not easy, but it is worth the extra effort for future of this great state." In addition to this, I'd like to share a video clip of a Clean Air Summit that was recently hosted and part of the panel discussion that was involved in that.
... we're trying to breathe sometimes here and we're having a panel discussion with James Campbell, Rocky Mountain Power, we have Riceburg, Department of Air Quality, the State of Utah, Sarah Wright, and your organization is called Utah Clean Energy. And Tom Carter is with UCARE and we also have with us Dr. Kelly...
Terry Kelly.
Terry Kelly, a researcher at University of Utah and has studied these issues. Sarah, let's, I was looking at your website and you talk a lot on your website about pollution caused by building, office buildings, that sort of, that you are not aware of, that my home is a pollution. How does that happen and how is it working?
You're right, Bill. We really don't think that natural gas...
Can you try it on with that?
...because it is very pathetic, but then it contributes to pollution. Right now, various sources, which include our homes and buildings, are about 40% of the pollution.
I can share this video clip with the council members if that's better.
I think we'll have to do that separately because apparently they can't correct the feedback. Sorry about that.
Let's move on, we can move on to the next slide. That's fine. Throughout our history as builders, we've been receiving awards for not only our sustainability efforts but for our designs and for working with communities throughout the valley. This is just a few of them that I wanted to share with the city council. We've been, on the next slide, we've been building homes for over 30 years, more than 5,000 homes and apartments in over 30 communities. And I'd like to note that we actually got our start here in West Valley and have always been appreciative of that. Last year, we sold 119 homes and about 150 and built 150 apartments. The idea with the townhomes is that we wanted to target the millennial buyer group, which is going to be the largest share of home buyers as we move forward. 50% of them live in suburban communities, which dispels the myth that all of them want to be in the urban cores. Important, high on their list is that they do not want to deal with renovations or plumbing and electrical problems and they put a greater value on lower maintenance. They wanted the ability to customize and choose their designs. Commuting is an issue for them. They want to be close to where they work and be able to walk to amenities in their community. Green features are extremely important to these younger buyers. 47% want solar panels and efficiency in their home. 84% place importance on heating and cooling costs. This slide speaks to the demand and the importance that we have of building a home that these people can afford to live in, a home that they find attractive. And there's a great demand in the city for this, as well as the entire state. You know, we're in the middle of a housing shortage. Last year, in the Salt Lake Valley, we had a shortage of over 8,000 units. And we believe that by providing these high-performance townhomes, we can make a greater impact on providing a solution to that problem. This slide just illustrates the diversity within West Valley. The yellow is the single-family zoning. As you can see, it's the majority of it, the majority of it is yellow. And our project, we believe, would not tilt the scales away from that, from that balance that the city is seeking. Land use at Highbury, I would just like to point out that of the land that is being used right now, 57% of it is for single-family homes with only 25% for townhomes. And 18% of the Highbury land is being used as apartments. So, this current zoning code is very restrictive and the market would not support it. And we are seeking this zone change in order to provide something for buyers that can have a home to move into. And finally, we have been talking to the residents and getting their feedback and have been working to address the concerns that they have. And we are more than happy to continue working with them on a concept of single-family homes, but it would need to be drastically different from the current zoning ordinance that is in place. This concept has 83 homes on smaller lots and would be a smaller square footage. And like I said, we're happy to continue working with the city council and with the residents to come up with a plan that works for everyone, even if it means single-family homes. Thanks for the opportunity for being here to present and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. But, oh, sorry, but first I'd like to give you an opportunity to ask Steve Thon, he's here and does home energy rating scores for us and rates each homes if you'd like to ask him any questions as well.
Okay. Would you just clarify, you said 83 homes, smaller footprint for both lot and the building. What would those be approximately, the size of the home?
Right now, the concept that we're looking at is about 2,000 square feet to 26, 2700 square foot homes with 4,000, 5,000 square foot lots.
4,000 to 5,000 square?
Square foot lots.
Okay, thank you. I think it was, he invited this one gentleman to come up. If you'll introduce yourself, if you have comments to make.
Yes, I'm Steve Thon. I'm the HERS raider that does all of the energy work for Garbet Homes and other houses and code, and also code testing and so forth throughout the northern Utah. Our company is called Provident Energy. We're from Ogden. And we've been working with Garbet now for years and watching them move their energy efficiency from very efficient housing, very efficient moldy family housing, up to now the zero-energy-ready house. And the zero, and I do also a lot of testing and a lot of certifications on just code houses throughout Utah County, Salt Lake area, up into Logan and so forth. And what they are building in energy efficiency, there is no comparison. And there are a lot of areas that the houses do not even meet code. Just because they're not, the jurisdictions do not actually make them get to code, the energy code, the Utah Energy Code, which is very, very weak. As Paul stated, it's a 2009 code. And here we are, years later. But if there's any questions about the zero-energy-ready house, I can answer those because I'm the guy that certifies it and turns it into DOE and turns it into the EPA if anybody has any questions at all about it. No question?
I have a question. Sorry, just one question. With the zero-energy and the high-performance parameters that the current proposed housing have, is it possible to do that with a single-family residence?
Yes, it is. In fact, we do a lot of single-family residence for zero-energy-ready.
If you could help me understand, the statement was made that the zero-energy-ready and the HERS score of what, 41, 42, 43, were better than the competition? That doesn't tell me anything because I have no perspective. That's like saying the shade of red is the best shade of red. It's more red than the competition's red. I say, okay, thank you. So, what does that mean? Let's take an example of energy costs. What would a typical home or comparative type of unit cost for energy versus one built under this zero-energy-ready?
The HERS score is based on 100. 100 was a 2006 energy codehouse. And so, that's 100. The lower it is, your savings go down according to the score. Let's say it's 40, 45. 55% less energy cost in a Garbet house than a 2006 codehouse. As he stated, the, right now, the Utah Energy Code has been manipulated so that actually it's like a 2009 codehouse. And the 2009 codehouse is only 15% better than a 2006 house. So, let's say that it is at 85. So, 85... So eighty-five to forty-two is forty percent more efficient than a Utah codehouse. So whatever the size of the house is, the bigger the house, the more energy it's going to consume just to heat it and cool it, more lights, more everything. And, I mean, I see that the housing, we do houses for about thirty different builders. And the majority of what we do now is multi-family, just because that is what, I mean, and they're moving in the minute, we're the last person in to inspect a house for code or for zero-energy-ready or any energy star. Well, they're moving the trucks right in behind us because the multi-family is just filling up. And we do hundreds of apartments a year also, and it's the same way. They just can't wait for the apartments to be able to fill up. So I can see this millennial, the millennial moving into these apartments and into this multi-family. Actually, I see houses for sale in the subdivisions of the single families, and I never see available signs hardly ever on the multi-families.
I'm still not there, okay?
Okay. So just to put it in a different way, we are twice as efficient as our competition. So we are twice as good, two times better than our closest competitor. So on a scale of, so the competition comes in at about a hundred, and we're getting scores in the forties and fifties. So if all things were equal, they would, let's say they spend a hundred dollars on their power and heating, a buyer in our home would spend fifty.
Okay, but you just, he just stated that that was based upon a 2006 home, and he indicated that 2009 homes were eighty-five instead of a hundred. And now we're in 2018. And so what has been the change since then? So what are we comparing to, the competition from 2006, 2009, or today?
So the 2018 code has been given so many exceptions and loopholes that it is basically the same as a 2009 code. Builders lobby extensively at the Utah Legislature in order to carve out these exceptions so they don't have to put all the extra energy efficiency products inside the homes. So today, they are getting in the eighties and in the nineties, while we are getting scores in the forties, which is twice as efficient as theirs. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, I wanted you to make that clear.
It was basically done by the legislature. The code that changes every three years, the code that changes every three years was modified for the code that took it back to the 2009. And it has not changed since that 2009, and it won't change again. They won't even review it again until 2021.
So we're, yeah, so we're stuck with 2009 codes that all the other builders are building at till 2021, while we are voluntarily building at the 2032 standard. And to clarify, if we were to do single-family homes, they would have the same technology that the townhomes have and get those scores in the low, in the forties and in the low fifties.
Okay, if the council doesn't mind, I'm going to ask a few more questions because I'm just interested. You talked about your house size being approximately thirteen hundred square feet, no basement. Is that correct?
With a basement.
Is the basement, in addition to that, an unfinished basement?
It would be part of that square footage, yeah.
Would be part of that square?
With the townhomes. It's included, yeah, the empty space is included in that.
Okay, well, I was talking about the house, the one you have up, or the one that's showing up there.
The single-family?
Yeah.
Those would be in the two thousand square foot range to the twenty-six?
Two thousand to twenty-six hundred. And that's on, with no basement, that's all above ground?
That would include the basement.
And that means that the basement is finished and included in that two thousand to twenty-six hundred?
Yes, but we also, our plans could change. We're still evaluating the water table there and what we will actually build.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what the numbers represent, what you're telling us, okay? So just based upon your discussion at this point, the proposal is to reduce the lots significantly and then fairly significantly reduction on the homes, not sure exactly what that reduction is, in return for a energy-efficient home that reduces the cost by approximately forty percent?
Yes, forty to fifty percent.
Yeah. Now, there were a lot of other things you talked about, but, and some of the items that you talked about here in West Valley, we're getting, you know, builders to actually do those, some of the interior, what did you call those? I wrote it down here, but, oh, upgrades for the interior. A lot of those were requiring home builders to do those now anyway. So I'm trying to separate out what would be built anyway versus what you're proposing. So that's the reason for my questions. So I'm not sure, I don't think most of ours don't deal with energy efficiency, but rather the other ones like granite countertops and the like, if that's typically what we've been seeing in our townhomes and different things like that and in our homes.
And that's the standard that we build too. Card surface, countertops, solid surface flooring, stainless steel appliances, gas stoves.
Okay. Well, that's enough on my questions for now. To the council, any questions? Then with that, any further public comment? We got lots of interest. Okay, now, on these, people can't speak twice, right? Okay. But we will give priority to those who haven't spoken yet. I know the gentleman in the blue shirt has not spoken. We'll let them get their word in first.
I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Kevin Hausman. I live at 2973 Septon Drive. Wasn't really very prepared to come up here and speak, I guess I've kind of been attending and to watch and support, but not really to get up here, not quite used to this. My wife and I are both from out of state. We've been in Utah about eleven, twelve years. We're both engineers. We came in as part of a big hiring group at ATK, and a lot of us are from out of state, and we're two going to a lot. Don't have a lot of good friends or family here. As you can see, our roots run shallow in this neighborhood, in this community. But there's been a bit of a change the last couple of years, getting to know some of our neighbors and making new friends, that kind of stuff. Our roots are getting a little deeper. I think that's kind of what you would desire from some of these neighborhoods like this when the master HOA has developed. Hopefully, you see the turnout here and the fact that we're acting as ambassadors to others in West Valley City, outside of West Valley City, and what the city is and what can become. Well, I hope. I guess I'm against the zone change to medium density and just want to say that I hope you guys make a good decision, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. And let's see, here, start right behind you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Brandon Ball. I've spoken here before. I live on 585 West Bricks Some Way in Highbury Place. I'm on the HOA board, and I also want to speak as a homeowner as well. So I just kind of wanted to hit a couple of points that Garbett Homes made in their First is about the canoe video. You know, I thought it was really nice to see the canoes in the water, and I think if they're going to provide a free canoe to everybody that purchases a home, that might be a feature that gets used. The other part is they didn't show in the video is that, you know, along the east side where they were showing them going to, there is a lot of garbage along the canal, left from the homeless people that had kind of moved in since the north, since the relocation of the homeless shelters. So that's one thing that maybe is a separate item to address, but just got brought up and reminded you they were doing the canoes. Another part is, in their slide, they showed people walking around, walking their dogs. Everybody looked really happy. The one thing that stuck out to me was that these homes don't have sidewalks. So all these people must have been trampling on everybody's nice lawns. So, you know, that's just something that I wanted to point out, is that these townhomes and these single-family homes that they're proposing do not have sidewalks. We talked about a wow factor. As of right now, as a resident, I'm not wow. I wouldn't move from my current home, as a millennial, to these high-energy-efficient homes currently, as they are right now. We talked about solar. I know a lot about solar. I ran a solar company for four years. And I think that that's a great start, and I would love to see homes with solar, more solar homes in the area. In fact, done right, they can be beautiful, they're very aesthetic, and they do add a lot of value. They talked about framing and air and all these new innovative features, and I'm kind of thinking to myself, well, these homes are so close to each other, they're probably just sharing one air conditioner. So the other thing is, they are saying, well, we're volunteering to build to a 2022 standard. Well, that's really nice for a company to volunteer to do something like that, you know, and apparently in 2022, we're all communing to work too. You know, I just don't see that happening. I really don't. I think, I think that there's a couple of things I do like about these homes. One is the HERS score, which I think is awesome, okay? It's fantastic that they're doing that. Do I think that there's some room in improvement to the community to get bigger lots than a four thousand square foot lot? Absolutely. They're just too close. The, to, on the flip side of that, you know, I have to say, you guys, I understand where you're coming from as far as wanting to have larger homes for the remaining one percent of undeveloped land. I really do. But is it really the right thing to do to have such a high requirement? I just think that maybe we need to look at reducing that just a little bit to allow for people like myself, who wouldn't buy a $5,000 home next to apartment buildings, to move into. And I think that's another thing to consider. You guys kind of cornered yourselves, as far as I'm concerned, when you allowed that apartment to be built. Because if your requirements are to build single-family homes right next to a huge apartment complex, that we've already expressed our concerns of things that have happened since that apartment complex has come in, I think that you're going to have a hard time getting a builder to agree to do that. So we're talking about undeveloped land. I personally would love to see that land developed. We're almost there, and I'm kind of shocked after meeting with Paul Garbett and Associates just on Monday, yesterday, that they even came in and presented the townhome idea after hearing our, after talking with them. I think that was just a waste of everybody's time because that's, to me, that doesn't show me that they listened to our concerns in that meeting. So I would like to see Garbett Homes or any other developer, to be honest, come in with a little bit bigger-sized lots, same kind of higher energy-efficient stuff. I think that's great. The homes look beautiful. And I'd like to see the city also reconsider the requirements for the lot size or the lot size and the home size. You know, I think if we can all, if we can come together and get the right developer, we'll see, we'll see the city continue to grow and flourish. Thank you for your time.
There's another one over here.
Mayor of City Council, my name's Curtis Reed. I live at 5147 West Sandwell Drive. There are just comparisons of homes. Mine's a 2014 Ivory Home, okay? They talked about having solar panels. Most of our homes on that area have solar panels. We can either have a water heater tankless or with natural gas. A lot of people choose not to do the tankless because there's a scalding issue that happens with a lot of homes. Give you an example, my energy bill is sixty dollars a month, and I live in a thirty-two square, thirty-two hundred square foot home. We need to have the bigger lots in there, the bigger homes in there for us to be able to go in there and move into a nicer home as we upgrade each time. I just hope you guys make the right decision, and please leave it at low density. We do not need the medium density. Oh, one other question that I'm going to ask is, we're talking about energy efficiency. What about all the cars that are going to be bringing in there, all the pollution that comes into that area? That doesn't matter if the homes are high value. There's going to be too much pollution from just the automobiles that's going to be coming into that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all the hands I saw. Oh, looks like we got a couple more. Okay.
Sorry, I'm going to go again because I didn't spend fifteen minutes before. Do you know my name again? Darren Blanchard at 2809 South Bricks Some Way. Some of the other people kind of touched on some of the same things I wanted to say, but, you know, creating a home with a better carbon footprint is great. And if it's, if it's fifty percent better, if they're twice as good as the competition, but then you pack in double the amount of people, that's a net zero. There's, there's no gain there for, for the city, other than sticking a higher population into a smaller area. And Garbett, or Paul Garbett was, you said was a significant change. His words were drastically different zoning. And I don't think that anyone here is wanting to have drastic changes to the plan that's been in place. I kind of agree with Brandon when, you know, the Garbett people came and met with our HOA representatives yesterday and presented the single-family home, and then to come here today and show the townhomes again feels disingenuous. It kind of, I wasn't prepared for that either. It seemed like they were willing to work with us and listen and kind of try and meet us in the middle with a single-family home plan, but then to come and present the townhomes again just doesn't, doesn't seem right. If I can go and stand between the homes and touch them with my hands, I don't see what the point in separating these out into single-family homes is if that's what's going to be allowed. At that point, just let them make the townhomes because, you know, let them have their zero-energy efficiency at that point because they're not a single-family home that you or I would consider living in and consider a single-family home. We are not opposed to energy efficiency. We're opposed to the multifamily homes. And as stated by his question, can you do the same thing in a single-family home? The answer was yes. So I think that we can still have these energy-efficient homes. They can still be beautiful. They can still have all of the quality that Garbett puts into their homes, but we can do it in a better single-family home on a bigger lot that would be better for our city and for our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Show another hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Scott Howell. Thank you for allowing us to address you tonight. A few years ago, I was involved in a campaign, a statewide campaign, and I asked my staff to go out and find some homes that represented clean air. And the number one issue at that time when we polled were people were concerned about clean air. They wanted to have it. So my staff came back and they said, you won't believe what we just found. There's a subdivision not too far away, and they have these townhomes in it, and their average utility bill goes from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars a month. I said, that can't be. That absolutely can't be. So my staff said, no, you got to go down and see this. We went neighbor to neighbor and we asked them. So that's how I became acquainted with the quality of a high-performance home and what Garbett was doing. Now, the reason I was so concerned about that, it was the number one polling item as I was running for this other office, but number two, my granddaughter has asthma. And when you look at the facts of what causes air pollution in our community, then number one is automobiles, number two are homes and buildings. And so we took that information and we made a big deal out of, this is how we're going to solve, be part of solving the challenge of bad air. And that's how we came about to understand Garbett. We validated all their facts. We actually made a commercial on it. You probably don't remember it because you don't remember probably voting for me, but maybe you did. I want to explain something tonight to the residents that are here. We met with Brandon and Matt and Nicole, and in our meeting with them, we explained to them that we needed to come forward and do the town- do the townhomes. We can't change the city agenda, we can't change the ordinance. We reached out to the manager, and we got the direction that you're on there. So we apologize to you, who misunderstood. We had no choice. But what we did have a choice in is, we listened to you. You forgot that part. We listened to you, and we came up with the next plan. And we believe that this high-performance, high-energy-efficient homes will be a star for West Valley. It will make this area even better than what it is today. We look forward to meeting with HOA. In fact, Matt has put us on the agenda to meet with their whole HOA, to describe what we think is a compromise, and we can keep collaborating together. And we're not 110% set on 4,000-square-foot lots and 2,000-square-foot homes. But what we are set on, that we can't make this work with the ordinances that you passed. We can't make that footprint work, and have sustainable, high-performance homes, and be able to have a market here that's going to drive the economy. We worked with realtors, we've done marketing studies. We know that price-point range of where people will come in and move. So that's really a couple of things we're asking for tonight from the council, is to have consideration, and know that we're continuing to work with you. We've had the opportunity to talk to many of you one-on-one. We think a collaborative effort between council and neighbors to come up with a solution that creates a win-win-win for everyone. And mostly, the win are for the next generation of residents, who look forward to living here in this great community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I gave you the whole facts on these utility bills, and what they look like. This is the Tesla model of home building. And to the gentleman that talked about the cars that are going to be coming in, yeah, cars drive that. We hope that there will be incentives, that we will have a Prius, that we'll have non-polluting cars. In these homes, we also talked about having EVs, where people can plug in their cars, because we want to incent them to have an automobile that contributes and reduces our carbon footprint for everyone, but mostly for my granddaughter. That's really what I'm mostly concerned about. Any questions? Thank you for your service. Go ahead. Sorry, Mayor.
No.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
No, I had to check four questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, and thanks for your service.
Okay. Gentleman in the yellow shirt.
Thank you. I'm David Hammond. I live at 2017 South Brick Someway. Reason we were originally against this idea was for people given a reason to stay in this area. If they're in townhomes, they're just there for a couple of years till their income increases, then they leave. They have no incentive to keep this place viable, pretty, or anything like that. They're just here temporarily. And these highly-efficient homes can't pass the market, but what's going to keep them here? If you have a beautiful home with a nice lot, good-sized lot, you want to stay here. But if you have these small homes, there's not a reason to stay here and be interested in how this community looks like. So that's my biggest objection is, how, what's the incentive to keep those people here, besides just energy efficiency? Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Leonie Hammond, his wife. So I live in Brickson. No, I think most of the people here, we have a Facebook page where we share ideas, what needs to be done. I don't think we oppose this energy efficiency. We are all for that. No, our most concern is parking. I don't think Garbett Homes, even some of the properties they already have right now, if you drive by, there are townhomes now. I drive three times a week to go to the grocery store. And it's very narrow, it's straight, and it's all packed with their cars. So now they're, want to build up, any three more homes? Average people have about two to three cars. So where do you want to put those cars? On top of our heads? I don't know. Maybe. So we didn't even solve our problem. We barely solved our problem at Pinnacle, barely. You know, last Saturday, Darren Blanchard has a person who lives in Pinnacle. He drove to his lawn, cut his tree, and drove him to the post. Just how bad it is. So now we have this new high-density home, townhome, whatever. They planned all these amazing things for their homes, but they're not thinking about our neighborhood. How many cars can we still put there? It just makes me sick when I drive there. There's people, kids crossing, sometimes there are people that are crossing in there, but I don't see, because there's so many cars parked outside their apartments. Then if they are putting more homes next to the property, even Soviet, how am I going to drive there? So I think our concern mostly here are too many townhomes, too many homes on top of each other, and too many cars. It's insane. And I, we, my husband and I, this is our third home. We saved a lot to buy, to build this beautiful house we live right now. You know, I mean, I saved. I didn't have a cell phone for 15 years. Can you believe that? Three kids in three different schools? That's how much we saved to put in our homes. I drove a Dodge Caravan, second-hand, for 14 years. It was almost falling apart. Why? Because we saved to put in this new neighborhood. And we're not poor. We're not rich also, but we're not poor. But we saved that far, to put all this money in your homes. And now, we have this nightmare. And I'm like my husband. When people, they start their new life, they buy townhomes, small homes, and then they start having kids, they start to move out. But when people in Highbury, we move into the neighborhood, I can tell, because we go to the same church anyway, we hear all this conversation. We want to spend the rest of our lives here. We want to see our kids growing up, moving out of the house, going to college, and they come back. They have a big place for them to bring their kids, our future grandkids. So I don't want to feel like, in five years, now my husband, you know, he's getting the middle age, he's planning for your retirement. I don't want to buy another house again. I don't want to pack everything again. Only spend my days, unless, I mean, the lottery is different, but it's not the case here in Utah. I want to stay here in Highbury. And I want to live there for as long as I can. But these new things happening, Pinnacle and Garbett Homes, I, we are having second thoughts now. We might put our house for sale in a few years. Things doesn't change. Thank you.
Thank you, and seems like, okay.
Sorry, just briefly, just a couple of clarifications. On the site plan, there are sidewalks. It's shown on there, and then also, that canal, what we're proposing is improving that to create a dock or a park.
Okay. Are you referring to what's up on the screen?
Yeah, what's up on the, what's up on the screen right now, with two-car garages and a driveway.
Yeah. What we're, yeah, that was interesting information. We've got a lot of information, but the issue before us is townhomes, 153 units, 12 per acre, 1,300 square feet on 12.85 acres. It's the only thing we can vote on. So, although it's been good, why, and that's fine that you share it, but just so you're aware, we're not going to vote on that. Can't. Okay? Anything else that you want to add?
Well, I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure it's known to you, that we are happy to meet further with the neighbors, and with the city council, to find a solution that works for everyone.
Okay. And then we had one more? Okay. Oh, another one.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Jason Miller, I still live at 5378 Seventy Drive. Just a couple of things to bring up. One, I'm not sure what to think of it, but I find it really interesting, and somewhat telling, at least to me, that out of Garbett's 15-minute roughly presentation, in the neighborhood of 14 minutes of that was on energy efficiency, and one minute was on why it needed to be rezoned for multifamily. Again, I find that really interesting. As far as I know, none of the current residents of Highbury are at all opposed to Garbett. In fact, it sounds like they've got, they're a great builder, have great ideas, and we'd love to see them build something there, just not multifamily. Wait, I had something else, but I made a note, and now I've forgotten. I'd also like to suggest, he presented some numbers on percentage of the area of Highbury that is currently single-family versus townhomes versus apartments. That's an interesting number, and makes it seem like there are far more single-family homes than apartments or townhomes. But I think if I can, if you consider that from a percentage-of-population standpoint, you'd almost turn that number upside down. So, just, again, something to think about. And I think that's all I had. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Hurst. I live at 5242 Torbay Court. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I found this all very industry-interesting. One is, I'm trying to find my notes here, maybe I'll just have to, just by luck, they won't come up now, but the idea, what Mr. Hammond was talking about is a sense of community. Other places where I've lived, I'm a longtime resident of West Valley City. We've lived in places where there was a sense of neighborhood, a sense of community, in all the things that we do. And I've admired the other construction of Garbett Home. I'm not opposed to that. It's the same thing as the townhome. Like currently, if I could bring my notes up, it would tell us, right now, there's just under 200 homes in that roughly half-acre by three-quarter acre, or half-mile by three-quarter-mile area. But there's roughly, two, there's roughly just under 200 homes, but there's around 300 townhomes already there. And in talking to the, to the HOA leaders of those three townhome groups, now after 10 years, roughly half of those townhomes are rented. So if you think about 300, there's already 150 of those homes that are being rented, and then you have around, what, close to, between 500 or 600 apartments in that area. So you think of a sense of community, you've got very few, I'm going to say, owner-occupied dwellings versus renter-occupied dwellings, which makes it very hard to create a sense of community and a sense of home. And like what was said by Mr. Hammond, you have young families move in, as soon as their children get old enough to want to play outside, they move out of those townhomes and in someplace else. I think the idea of a single-family dwelling, like Garbett is talking about tonight, is a good idea, but they have to be big enough to have a backyard, so children can play in the backyard. If they're on such small lots, then it's the same problem that you have with townhomes. So the single-family dwelling is a good idea, so maybe, I think the current zoning was about 40 homes in that area. They're talking 83. Maybe we need to split the difference or something like that, so the lots are a little bit bigger, so that we have permanent residents, and we have a sense of community in that area, and a lot of people are happy to live there. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
So, council members, we would entertain a dialogue with you all about, if that's even within the realm of possibilities, to do, as this gentleman just talked about. Maybe it is splitting that baby, but be assured, we are collaborative, and we want to make this work. We think that that is a spectacular area out there, and so, we hope that you'd have that dialogue. And we understand completely that this is, is just going to be voting on the townhomes. We get that. But the bigger picture is what we wanted to present to you tonight, to try and get a fill of what, what direction you're headed. And we have a bet that this might not pass.
Is that everyone? With that, then, I will close the public hearing portion. Now we come back to the council to address the issue before us, which is, of course, now we will deal with two issues. Ordinance 18-22, the general plan change from low-density to medium-density. And then after that, we will consider ordinance 18-23, the zoning change from single-dwelling residential to multiple-unit dwelling residential. It's the issue before us. Councilman, do you?
Couple of, couple of comments. And really, I'd like to focus in on this, as mentioned by the mayor. Our role is to vote on what's before us, and what's before us is a zone change to RM for 12.83 acres. It's not to choose a developer, it's not to choose a home design, it's not to choose any amenities, it's not any of those things. Those things were presented to us as reasons to make a zone change, but that's not what's before us. And should we make the zone change, there would be more work to do to develop a development agreement and so forth. Everything that I've heard from Garbett, I mean, it sounds great. I hope you find an RM zone to build in. But this is not an RM zone unless we, by majority, vote to change it to RM, based on history of this property, and the general plan that we worked on before, and will work on again, and what we think ought to occur on these 12.83 acres, we're just limited right there. I guess, you know, I was on the council back when those Pinnacle apartments were approved, and part of that agreement was that this property would not be changed to a higher density at that time. In the life of a city, that was moments ago. It wasn't ages ago, where things have changed so much that that old city council, what they decided and thought of, is no longer relevant. So I guess with that said, I'll make a motion to deny ordinance 1822, the general plan change.
Second. Any further discussion, council members? Okay?
I would like to just commend the neighbors in Highbury for organizing. You've shown us what a great neighborhood you have, by your participation in this discussion and this proposal. So thank you. I hope that you will stay in West Valley, and I hope that we can keep you happy. So thank you. But I'd also like to commend Garbett. I think this is a great idea, the high-efficiency homes, and I hope that we can find a way to make that work. But this is not the right place for higher-density.
I'd just like to echo Councilman Nordfeld's thoughts. Houses look great. The efficiency looks great. I'd love to be in one at some time. But this is not the place to put those higher-density. And as you collaborate and dialogue with the council, it will be through our staff. So don't come and make a presentation to us, saying our staff doesn't tell us the truth, because they pass what is dialogued back to us. Thank you.
If I could make another comment, I missed making this, and that's, that collaborative effort. And, you know, we vote as a body, and we don't always agree. And if I tell you one thing, that doesn't mean anybody else is going to agree with me. And so I think that it can be really unproductive to talk to some of us and think that there's any kind of an arrangement or a deal. We only vote on what's brought before us in this meeting, and we have to vote on this application tonight, not on what we might approve or disapprove of in the future. And our role is very limited and very defined. And I think it's always been difficult for developers to, I mean, often they ask, well, what would you want? And I, you know, my opinion is just one opinion, and I can't really commit anybody, even myself, to that until an application or a change is until an application or a change is brought to us in a concrete form, not a conceptual idea that we actually can look at and vote on. And I feel for the developers, this not being the first case, this being the last of many cases where there's sometimes befuddling of what do you want? And all I can say is, give us your best shot and we'll vote on it. And that's what we're going to do pretty soon here.
Okay, I always have to pause just a moment to see if anyone's collecting their thoughts. Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Viti Samanu? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Beeler? Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Nordfeld? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Move for denial of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three, the zone change. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Hune? Councilman Beeler? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Viti Samanu? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion for denial passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now, we welcome you all to stay, we've got more business to do. It's just not related to Garbet Homes, so... But if anyone leaves, we won't be offended. Okay, let's move on. We have ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four. This is in fill-in at Title Seventeen of our code. See if I can get this up. There are a number of policy changes that were made there. Most of the work that is done has been to reorganize, make technical changes. There were a few items on issuance of the business license. For business license was revoked to prevent some abuses there because the language wasn't clear. Devices simulating fireworks must be inspected, another one that came up. These are just some of the highlights of some of the things, I'm just looking down through the list. Oh, and then redefining qualified facilities, and what isn't or is not a lodging facility. Oh, changes to our Good Landlord program because of changes of the state legislature. Oh, and then one that we had a lot of fun discussing, food card licenses. So that we made sure that we were able to issue those before they were issued in a certain timeframe all at once, because there was always a waiting list. And then it turned out, there wasn't a waiting list, so we couldn't issue them if someone came later in the year, even though it was available. So those are some of the changes. There are more in there. So, but that gives you a flavor. There are not a lot of major changes the council's talked about, most of these in detail. And we have this summary that's also attached to the documentation here for our meeting tonight, if anyone would like to peruse those a little more carefully. But that's the issue before us. To the council.
Move to approval of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four. Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Viti Samanu? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Beeler? Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Nordfeld? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance eighteen dash twenty-five. This is an update to our code for certain fees. And this relates to the Good Landlord program due to some changes. And making this work out, we're adjusting the disproportionate fee can be reduced from ninety-four to thirty-five dollars. And this ends up because of the changes being somewhat revenue-neutral. And it gets us to the same fee for all rental units. So that one's pretty straightforward, then. To the council.
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen dash twenty-five. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Hune? Councilman Beeler? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Viti Samanu? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have resolution eighteen dash eighty-seven. Approve a cost-sharing agreement between West Valley City and Utah Department of Public Safety. There were some changes that took place for local public safety and firefighting surviving spouse, a medical plan. The legislature put in place a program that that was to be done by everyone. And so we, in order to get ours in place, it's approximately a fee of about ninety-five dollars each for each police officer and firefighter, or approximately thirty thousand dollars a year. And this medical policy covers children of a surviving spouse up to the age of twenty-six. Let's see, anything else in there I didn't mention that's key, Mr. Pyle? It is a very worthwhile thing to do. And so, our city will participate in that. And this will allow approving our spending those funds and being involved in that program. To the council.
Well, we are required to participate in it, although it does, in effect, replace what we had done, or planned to do before. With that, I'll move for approval of resolution eighteen dash eighty-seven.
Second.
All properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Viti Samanu? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Beeler? Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Nordfeld? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. My computer's acting up, so I'll just continue on without it. Resolution eighteen dash eighty-eight, this is authorizing an agreement between our city and our accounting firm that does our annual audit, Kettington and Christensen CPAs, an LLC. And this is for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. There we go. And the amount of that is seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. This is the same company that's done our audit for a number of years, which by state law we are required to do, and for which I'm sure our citizens are grateful, because it needs to be done. We need to be audited just to ensure everything is being recorded and spent properly and within guidelines identified. So, and this particular cost is the same as before. The company that is doing our auditing, Kettington and Christensen, have become more efficient, so they're able to keep the cost the same. And as they get more knowledgeable of West Valley City, it seems to work. So, it seems to be good for both of us, so that's the issue before us. To the council.
I move for approval of resolution eighteen dash eighty-eight. Second.
Properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Viti Samanu? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Beeler? Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Nordfeld? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have resolutions eighteen eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, and ninety-two, four of them. The first, an appointment of Nicole Cottle to the Utah Inland Port Authority Board. The next is a warranty-deed temporary construction easement, and this on the Forty-one Hundred South project. Same with the next one, ninety-one. Warranty-deed temporary construction easement, corner of Bannick and Forty-one Hundred South and ninety-two, right-of-way on property at Bannick Drive. So these were all related to that project that we needed to do there. Warranty deed as well, and trust temporary construction easement. So those are the items on there. To the council.
I move for approval for items on the agenda.
We have a second. And so, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Hune? Councilman Beeler? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Viti Samanu? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we have an item that was held over some unfinished business. This is application S-six twenty eighteen, filed by Troy Jensen, final plat approval for property at Forty-Fifty-Eight South, Thirty-Two Hundred West. That is the issue before us. Mayor, to the council.
This was on our agenda last week. I spoke against it, and it did not pass. I was informed by our legal staff after the meeting that because it complies with all of our requirements, I have really no basis to oppose it. So it just goes to prove you can't fight City Hall, even if you are City Hall. So with that explanation, I'll make a motion to approve application asked, six twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay, just a clarification from our legal staff. As long as it passes, it doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
Right, that would be correct, Mayor.
Just thought I'd throw that in. Okay, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Viti Samanu? Councilwoman Link? Councilman Beeler? Councilman Hune? Councilman Christensen? Councilman Nordfeld? And Mayor Bigelow? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, just one reminder. Next week, our study meeting will begin at four o'clock at station number seventy-six. Where we'll be showing a few fun things there. Then we will come back here for the rest of our study meeting here at City Hall and our regular council meeting at six-thirty. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Pyle, the closed session, does that need to be denied?
No, sir.
Or can we pick that up next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, it's not an urgent one, but we do need to get to it. It's just not time-sensitive. So with that, then, motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.